No.
Good morning, and welcome to the January 13th meeting of the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority, a board of trustees. And before we get started, I was told earlier that I'm breaking my rules again. Now it's 10:05, we haven't started yet. That's bad news. This is the last meeting. I definitely wanted to be on time, but hey, life goes on. As my wife would say, no, I better not quote my wife, I may come back to me. Before we get started, I would like to welcome freeholder Sarah Soi, new board member, sitting to my right, from Somerset County. We thank you for joining us today, and we look forward to working with you. You'll find this is a great, great board, and there's a lot of information, so anything that you need from us, we are all here to support you and help you through the process. As a reminder to all members, the microphones around the board table are very sensitive, and this meeting is being not only taped, but also webcast. Now, to start our meeting, I'll ask Beverly Morris to read the Open Public Meetings Act. Bev?
This is to advise that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star-Ledger, the Asbury Park Press, the Purion News, the Daily Record, the Home News Tribune, the Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald. It was posted in the Essex County Hall of Records in Newark and on the bulletin board of Lieutenant Governor in Trenton.
Thank you. The salute to the fact, please join me in honoring our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Bergen?
Here.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yeah.
Hunterdon?
Present, not voting.
Jersey City?
Here.
Middlesex?
Present.
Monmouth?
Present, nonvoting.
Morris?
Here.
Newark?
Here.
Ocean?
Here.
Hesse?
Here.
Somerset?
Here.
Sussex?
Here.
Union?
Present.
Warren?
Here.
Lieutenant, sorry, Governor's Office?
Here.
NJDOT?
Here.
NJ Transit?
Here.
Port Authority?
Here.
Citizens Representative?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have 18 voting members present and a quorum.
Thank you very, very much. Next item of business is the approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections or deletions or additions to the minutes of the November 12th board meeting? Okay, see none. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Morris will move them.
Thank you, Morris.
Second, Pasek.
And Pasek, second, thank you very much. Holding favor, do we have to have an individual vote, or just a general voice vote?
Whatever you prefer.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
If you can, I say aye. Anybody opposed?
I must abstain because I was absent. Ocean abstains.
Thank you. And we have abstentions? Any abstaining?
I'll also be abstaining because I wasn't on here yet, so.
Thank you.
Same thing with Bergen.
Who was the last abstention?
Bergen County.
Bergen.
But I do think they're outstanding minutes.
We'll make sure that's shown in the minutes.
In the next minute.
The minutes are approved.
Thank you very, very much. And now is the time for the chairman's remark. I liked this opportunity to present my report. Once again, thank you for coming to our annual meeting today. I also want to thank James Hughes, the Dean Memorates of the Bluestein School of Planning and Public Policy at Rutgers, for joining us today. He'll be giving a letters presentation in our ongoing Planning for 2050 series. You'll hear from him shortly. I am sure it will be very interesting. We've had numerous things that really, years ago may not have made sense, but all of them have come through. So far, he gets 10 for 10. That's for me. This is a significant day for me, as it marks the end of my time at the NJTPA chair position. It has truly been a great experience working with all of you over the last two years, and it has been an honor to be the first Latino to hold this seat. I am proud of everything that we have achieved together and thankful for the support of my fellow board members as we tackle some of the big challenges at the NJTPA and work to improve transportation in our region. We have accomplished a lot over the last two years. We fired a new executive director, oversaw the staff restructuring, and underwent a successful federal certification review that resulted in a number of commendations. We also adopted a new transportation improvement program, as well as Title VI and public engagement plans that will ensure that this agency's work is inclusive and accessible. Through all these challenges, the NJTPA has played a key role in planning our transportation system, funding projects, ensuring that the transportation network is in the state of good repair, and serving as a forum for regional discussions for critical transportation issues. In an era of hyper-partisanship, I am proud to say that we have continued the NJTPA longstanding tradition of working in a truly bipartisan way. I would like to even say that our board has been nonpartisan. When I became a chair of this board in 2018, I talked about three Es that is considered to be critical priorities in our region: the economy, the environment, and equity. As we know, transportation investments are critical when it comes to the economy, and the work that we have done during my tenure, improving the new studies and projects, has acknowledged that. Early this year, I attended the rededication of the Bayonne Bridge. We have already been a significant, it has been a significant benefit of rising the bridge so that much larger ships can pass under it to reach the East Coast's largest port. The port and the massive goods movements and logistic industry it supports has been tremendous growth in recent years. I applaud the Port Authority for its financial commitment to our region and, of course, to our economy. In terms of the environment, we approved funding for transit projects, signal optimization, and shuttles that will help improve air quality. We have also been meeting with our other metropolitan planning organizations and councils of governments in the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic to discuss how we can work with our states to develop measures and implement low-carbon transportation policy. I look forward to the continuation of those efforts in the 14 states that were participants in the Transportation and Climate Initiative. As for all, the final E, equity, I want to applaud the staff for developing a Title VI implementation plan that establishes a framework for ensuring the NJTPA does not discriminate against any groups. This plan details the steps that we are taking to see that everyone benefits from our transportation system and the opportunity that it provides. The NJTPA is also doing great work to include traditionally underrepresented groups in its engagement. Last year, it launched up next, North Jersey, a young adult advisory group that will provide us with critical input from a group who we need to hear from, more from, and the work underway to develop a liaison program that will boost our outreach with low-income and minority communities. I also want to touch on a topic that is woven throughout the NJTPA work, safety. The board has allocated $145 million to 115 projects since the local safety program began in 2004. More than $20 million has been allocated to 21 projects throughout the high-risk rural roads programs since its exemption in 2009. These two programs fund construction of low-cost, effective, high-impact safety improvements on county and local roads. They use a number of proven safety countermeasures identified by the Federal Highway Administration, including modern renovals to dramatically decrease the number of serious crashes. Another thing I'm particularly proud of in our Street Smart Pedestrian Safety Campaign, which hit a major milestone of 100 partner communities last year by combining public education and enforcement, the campaign has seen great results, including a 60% increase in driver stopping or people crossing before turning. Street Smart also completed a rebranding effort this last year. As part of its effort, the Street Smart website and social media messages were translated into Spanish for the first time. For those of you who know, nearly 14% of our region has a limited English proficiency, and of that, the larger share are the 8% who primarily speak Spanish. This is a great way to share our messages with a broader audience. I look forward to Street Smart's continued success. As I conclude my time as Chair of the NJTPA Board, I encourage you all to carry on a great work that we have been doing. We must continue to set up the vision for the future of transportation in our region that accounts for changing technologies and lifestyles while considering how to fund needed transportation improvements. And of course, funding will always be a great challenge. It was good to see approvals of federal budget for the fiscal year 2020 in December, but the FAST Act will expire on September 30th of this year. So all of us who care about transportation must work to see that it gets the funding it needs in the years to come. As representatives of our counties and cities, we must push for projects that are important to our constituents, but it is also critical that we continue to focus on the major regional issues we need to address collectively. Many challenges remain. Chief among them is building the new Hudson River Rail Tunnels that I am confident that the NJTPA and our partners along with the new chair that will be elected today will be able to meet these challenges. I want again to thank all of you for your support over the last two years and for entrusting me to lead this particular board. I look forward to continue to work with you on behalf of Union County and the people of our region. And that concludes my comments. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. NJDOT, any remarks?
No, but thank you very much for your comments. I've touched on very important items that we all need to consider as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. New Jersey Transit?
Not today.
Thank you, Jeremy. And now we'll listen to the Executive Director's report. Mary?
Thank you, and Happy New Year, everyone. On behalf of all of us at Central Staff, I want to thank Chairman Estrada for an extraordinary two years of service. I'm personally grateful to him for supporting me in my role as Executive Director since 2018, but more importantly, he has provided wise guidance on board issues as well as on the important day-to-day work of Central Staff and the subregions. Overall, it has been a very productive and fulfilling two years. We'll have more to say a little bit later, but for now, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll now briefly report on some key Central Staff activities since our last meeting. As you know, safety is of utmost importance to this agency, and collaboration with partner agencies and subregions is one of our key ongoing responsibilities. A perfect example of this is our active participation in development of the next state Strategic Highway Safety Plan led by NJDOT. The first of three stakeholder safety summits was held on November 15th at the College of New Jersey, where more than 200 planners, engineers, law enforcement personnel, advocates, and others participated. The second summit is planned for January 21st. With this open and accountable process, the plan is shaping up to reflect statewide agreement on the best approaches to meet pressing safety needs on all roads, so we urge you all to get involved. Regarding our own safety initiative, Street Smart New Jersey, we are continuing to reach out to law enforcement and local officials across the state. This includes presenting at a AAA pedestrian safety enforcement training for Hudson County police officers and meetings with officials from Edgewater, Blairstown, Harrison, and Berkeley Heights. In addition, Fair Lawn, who first partnered with us last year, is kicking off another safety initiative this month, and we look forward to many more campaigns this spring. We also continue our ongoing work with Rutgers and others in Together North Jersey. On December 5th, a TNJ workshop looked at neighborhood empowerment using crime prevention through environmental design as a model. The next TNJ forum is being planned for this March, so stay tuned for additional details. We also continue our collaboration with Sustainable Jersey to promote complete streets. We were pleased to join Sustainable Jersey, Rutgers VTC, and others at a very well-attended panel on this program at the League of Municipalities Conference back in November. I thank Chairman Estrada for attending that session as well. In addition, another workshop on implementing complete streets at the local level was held just last Thursday at Rowan University. Another round of technical assistance grants will be announced shortly. On a broader scale, our participation in the Metropolitan Area Planning, or MAP, forum continues. On December 13th, NIMTC, our counterparts across the Hudson, hosted the annual meeting of MPOs in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, and Pennsylvania, which featured presentations on the Portmaster Plan for 2050 and a study exploring the feasibility of passenger train service from southeast New York to Danbury, Connecticut. And once again, I thank Chairman Estrada for participating in that event as well. Here at NJTPA, we are currently reviewing applications for the Local Safety and High-Risk Rural Roads Program. Recommended projects will be announced for these programs shortly and will be considered by the Project Prioritization Committee. Also, several key planning efforts in various stages of consultant selection will begin soon and carry into the following fiscal year. They include work to systematically evaluate regional mobility needs and strategies, as well as a study of transportation demand management approaches. We'll also be engaging consultant support for the financial element of our next long-range plan, as well as for the long-range transportation plan outreach. And speaking of updating our plan, I should note that we are using our own in-house expertise to develop a series of background papers for the plan. Topics will include assessing local infrastructure conditions, promoting non-motorized transportation, and responding to climate change. You'll hear more about these papers and these topics as work on them progresses. Regarding upcoming fiscal year 2021, which begins on July 1 of this year, board members are reminded that the Draft Unified Planning Work Program, or UPWP, has been posted on our website as of December. Chapter 1 of the work program details Central Staff activities. In addition to long-range planning updates, our tasks include developing a greenhouse gas inventory and forecast, assessing truck parking needs, mapping pedestrian bicycle crossings that need improvement, and much more. Chapter 2 addresses subregional planning, including subregional studies program. Chapter 3 details the work of the eight transportation management associations, and Chapter 4 describes other regional transportation planning activities being conducted by our partner agencies. And the document also will include a detailed budget. So please review this draft document if you haven't already and give us your feedback by January 17. I thank everyone who submitted comments in recent weeks already. The Planning and Economic Development Committee will consider the work program for adoption in February, and it will go before the full board in March. For information on other recent Central Staff activities, please refer to the highlights in your board books. And before I close, I just want to make a few announcements about upcoming events. Again, the second summit for the State Strategic Highway Safety Plan will be held on January 21 at the College of New Jersey. The New Jersey American Planning Association Conference will take place on January 23rd and 24th in New Brunswick, and NJTPA will be presenting at two of those sessions. The Central Jersey Transportation Forum Meeting will meet on February 4th at the Plainsboro Public Library, and the 11th Annual New Jersey Bike and Walk Summit will be held on March 7th at Mercer County Community College. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. The item does due on the 17th, but that's been out for a while now.
Since December.
It sounded like today's the 13th, but it's the 17th, but it's been out since December, so I'm sure that we probably have already received some ideas.
That was just a friendly reminder.
Clarification. Thank you very much, Mary. Next is Planning for 2050 presentation now as part of our ongoing Planning for 2050 series that is informing our next long-range transportation plan. I'd like to introduce our speaker and guest, Dr. James Hughes, who is nationally recognized academic expert on demographics, housing, and regional economics. Dr. Hughes is a Senior Faculty Fellow and University Professor at the Eldridge Center for Workforce Development at Rutgers, formerly Dean of the Edward J. Blaustein School of Planning and Public Policy. Dr. Hughes is the Director of the Rutgers Regional Report, which has produced over 40 major economics, demographics, and real estate studies on New Jersey and the broader metropolitan region. He has authored and/or co-authored 34 books and monographs, and more than 150 articles. He has provided intensive budgetary and economic testimony in the New Jersey State Legislature and has given numerous policy briefings in Washington, DC and Trenton. He also has served on numerous New Jersey Commissions and task forces. He has received numerous awards, including the Distinguished Service Award of the New Jersey Chapter of the American Planning Association and the Rutgers Presidential Award for Distinguished Public Service. Please, let's welcome Dr. Hughes. Thank you very much for that kind introduction. Truth in advertising, however, I was given firm instructions by Mary to keep within today's timeline. I think that was because during my last presentation, she observed that during the first 10 minutes, 90% of the audience paid attention. However, during the second 10 minutes, 50% were distracted. During the third 10 minutes, 100% were engaged in sexual fantasies. So with the discipline I have not shown in many years, I will attempt to comply and proceed forthwith. Two basic admonitions today, since we're trying to look into the future. I've often been accused of being much better at forecasting the past than forecasting the future. And second, I've also been accused of being the Dr. Koforkian of the New Jersey economy. Very unfair, very, very unfair, but probably due to the simple fact that I've actually forecast nine, fully nine of our last five sessions. So you are twice forewarned. It's hard to believe, but this year, 2020, marks the third decade of the 21st century, the third decade of the new millennium. So I think it's certainly appropriate at this point in time to step back and start with a benchmark of the current status of New Jersey. So I'd like to provide a brief, cutting-edge profile of our beloved Garden State, and this is going to consist of six demographic and economic factoids. Number one, New Jersey currently has the second-highest median household income among the 48 continental states. Actually, Maryland had the audacity, the sheer audacity, to knock us off of our top-ranked perch eight years ago, a position we had long held. Nonetheless, our income has remained 32% higher than that of the nation. So I think that benchmarks our unique demographic economic capacity. If we seceded from the United States and became a separate nation, we'd be the wealthiest industrialized nation on earth, followed closely by Luxembourg. Now, that assumes that Maryland was not smart enough to secede, but we were. Obviously, and unfortunately, a sweeping statement like that must have a major caveat, and it certainly does. At the same time, New Jersey ranks number one, number one in housing costs. While our incomes are 32% higher than that of the nation, our housing costs are 58% higher, 58% higher. So I think a part of our income advantage is consumed by higher shelter costs. So our strong income metric often obscures our severe cost and housing affordability problems. Factoid two, New Jersey currently ranks third among all 50 states in the percentage of foreign-born, just slightly behind New York. 23% of the state's population is foreign-born, compared to 13.5% for the United States. 23.5 versus 13.5. That benchmarks our unique demographic diversity, and that's a key advantage in a global economy. Number three, New Jersey ranks second in mass transit usage. 11% of Garden staters use mass transit, more than double the nation's 5% rate. So that demonstrates our unique demographic transportation virtue. Very few states have equivalent statewide public transit infrastructures. Number four, unfortunately, New Jersey ranks third in time of commute. I think that demonstrates our unique demographic transportation fortitude. Nothing, absolutely nothing inhibits New Jerseyans from getting to work every morning. Number five, New Jersey ranks number one in density, with the densest state in America, a status we've held since 1970, 50 years ago. We are the only state with more than 1,000 people per square mile, a status achieved in 1982, 38 years ago. Our current density is just over 1,200 people per square mile. To put that into perspective, the density of Japan is 900 people per square mile. Density of India is 1,022 people per square mile, and we're over 1,200. So that demonstrates our demographic resiliency. Finally, despite this density, a higher proportion of New Jersey is covered by forest than states such as California and Alaska. In fact, New Jersey has more horses per capita than any other state in the nation. Or, from a horses' perspective, there are fewer humans per horse in New Jersey than any other state, and horses like it like that. So I think that demonstrates our unique environment and quality of life, and that's another key advantage in a knowledge-driven economy. So 2020 New Jersey baseline: affluent, high incomes, high economic capacity, but a severe cost and a severe affordability problem. We're the densest state in the nation with a high proportion of mass transit dependence, but we suffer congestion and long commutation times. Diversity is in our DNA, and we have unique environmental attributes. So I think some of those are key baseline parameters as we plan for the future. So within this context, let's briefly look at the national economic condition, which virtually overrides everything that takes place and will take place in New Jersey and the NJTPA region. So where exactly are we in the national business cycle? To badly paraphrase Benjamin Franklin, "In this world, nothing can be said to be certain except death, taxes, and a continuation of the business cycle." Never pauses, never stops, and there's no way to avoid its changing impact on absolutely everything. So where are we now? In June of '09, we exited the Great 2007-2009 Recession and entered the recovery and expansion phase of the cycle. That's indicated on the left side of the slide, June 2009, the trough. The arrow on the right side indicates where we are today, January 2020, still in the expansion phase more than 10 years later. This is the economic surprise of the 21st century, an expansion that has spanned the entire second decade of the century. It's the first decade in the history of the United States that we did not have a recession. It's the first decade in the history of the United States that we did not have a recession. And as we proceed into the third decade, the economy is still heading upward. It's slowing, but still moving upward. The expansion has now reached 127 months in length, stretching from June '09 to January 20, 10 years and 7 months. Believe it or not, it is now the longest upcycle in the nation's history, the status it achieved last July. Since it follows the Great Recession, it probably deserves the label "The Great Expansion." Despite this longevity, I think more New Jerseyans believe they've had an out-of-body experience than believe the expansion is now the longest in history. But it is what it is. As a point of reference, the previous record holder, now number two in length, was the 121, 20-month-long '91, the 2001 Expansion. That's indicated on the bottom of the slide. So full congratulations are in order to all of you, since you are all still vertical, you have not yet gone toes up, you have lived through the two longest economic expansions in the history of the republic. You have also lived through the roaring 10s, the roaring 10s. The 2010s actually turned out to be the best decade job growth on record. That's indicated in the bottom of the slide. We'll leave question of the quality of the jobs to another session. And it was a dramatic turnaround from the first decade of the century when we lost a million jobs. That was truly a lost employment decade. In any case, 100 years ago, we were entering the roaring 20s, the roaring 2020s. Are we now entering the roaring 2020s? I think only future economic historians will be able to answer that question. Of more immediate importance, how long can the current expansion last? Well, before I definitively answer that question, I should point out to you that views of the national economy have been hardening along hyper-partisan lines. As you can see in this slide, the red line, 70% of Republicans think the economy is getting better, while at the bottom, in the blue line, only 10% of Democrats think the economy is getting better. Both are looking at the same set of statistical data, the exact same metrics. Now, in this highly polarized world, I think it is well-recognized that I am the only totally objective person in the state of New Jersey. So rest assured that I'm going to be right in my economic outlook. As you can see, Morgan Freeman fully agrees with me. So with his endorsement, I'll go out on a limb, way out on a limb, and give you my totally objective forecast, my highly learned forecast. The Great Expansion definitely will continue until it doesn't. Seriously, we are in uncharted territory. We've never had an expansion that entered its second decade of growth. Nonetheless, despite its longevity, the current expansion still has some gas left in the tank. It's still got game. So rest assured, while the economy is not going gangbusters, a recession is not yet on the agenda, and you can take that learned forecast to the bank. Now, speaking of banks, it should be pointed out that mature expansions rarely die of old age, they rarely die in their beds. The Federal Reserve usually murders them by sharply increasing interest rates. And that's certainly not in the cards. The Fed has cut interest rates three times last year and is not about to raise them anytime soon. In any case, let's put our current situation into perspective. Australia, the wonder down under, hasn't had a recession since 1991, 29 years ago. That's something we can at least aspire to. 2020 problem, which I'm sure you're all aware, labor shortages are inhibiting growth. Employers are having an increasingly difficult time filling open positions. There are 7 million unfilled jobs nationally, a record level. There are 500,000 manufacturing jobs that are unfilled nationally. So we have far more job openings than unemployed people nationally. So that suggests a national economy still trying to push forward despite a number of uncertainties and geopolitical risks, with job growth actually being inhibited today by labor force constraints. So what about New Jersey and the Garden State economy? Truth be told, no sugar coating allowed. It's not a soaring state economy, it's not a high-flying state economy. It's also not a sinking New Jersey economy. It's not heading into the dumpster. Basically, it's an okay economy, an okay economy going forward. And coming from Dr. Kevorkian, that's a very positive assessment. Let's look at the unemployment or the employment metrics to examine this position, and we'll compare briefly New Jersey with our current neighbors and then to the United States. Between 2010 and 2018, the nation's growth rate, 17.7%, is clearly ahead of New Jersey's 11.2%. Now, that lag is not unique to New Jersey, it's characteristic of the entire Northeast region of the United States. However, New Jersey's 11.2% growth rate eclipses that of Pennsylvania, 8.9%, and is nearly double that of Connecticut's, 6.3%. As you can see in the numbers there, we are lagging New York State. However, New York State figures are bulwark by the unique economic boom taking place in New York City. If we extracted the Big Apple from the New York State data, New Jersey would be leading New York State in that regard. So our regional performance is more than okay. We're doing very, very well. So outlook for 2020, the state's going to have a Goldilocks economy, Goldilocks economy. Not too hot, not too cold, just about right. We don't have a bubble propping up growth, and we don't have a chance of inflation hitting us. So looking forward, our cyclical fortunes will be tightly linked to the national business cycle. Structurally, New Jersey, as well as the Northeast region, will probably lag that of the nation. And that's linked to demographic lag, which I'll get back to later. Okay, time to pivot, applying all of the keen analytical ability that I've honed during my many decades at Rutgers. I think I've been pushing economics a little too much. So this is the result. So let's put that behind us. I'm now going to focus on demographics, which should hopefully cheer you up. So bottom demographic line, we are in the midst of the greatest generational transformation of history. And this overall transformation consists of five age-defined demographic long waves that are shaping today, and they're going to continue to shape the future. Each successor long wave or generation is more diverse than its predecessor. You can see in the slide, the first is the rapidly maturing suburban-centric baby boom, born 46 to 64. Second is a middle-aged Gen X, or baby bust, born between 65 and 80. Rising urban-centric young adult millennials, or Gen Y, born 80, between 81 and 1996. Gen Z, born 97 to 2012. Gen Alpha, born post-2012, now entering toddlerhood. So let's review each and start with the ancients. The fabled, oversized baby boom, born 46 to 64, that was the most influential demographic event of the second half of the 20th century. It comprises mainly descendants of the great European immigration waves of the late 19th and early 20th century. Throughout each of its lifecycle stages, moving left to right, from birth to geezerhood, the baby boom dominated New Jersey, sending tidal waves through the economy and society. Sorry, all you baby boomers out there, the arrow is indicating your position today. You're moving ever further to the right side. So this is one example of my new favorite academic spectator sport, taunting baby boomers by telling them that they are now in the pre-decease stage of the lifecycle, the pre-decease stage. This year, 2020, the baby boom will be between 56 and 74 years of age. Harsh reality, every seven and one-half seconds, another baby boomer will turn 74 years in the United States. Every seven and a half seconds, another baby boomer will turn 74 years of age. That's 11,000 per day, a pace far outstripping the casualty rate of hunting accidents and car wrecks combined. And they consider this a calamity of biblical proportions. Suffice it to say, at one time, baby boomers used to rock around the clock. Now they're struggling to limp around the block. Rock around the clock to limp around the block. Now, I think I discerned some chuckling millennials and Gen Xers out there. So admonition one, challenge boomers at your peril. Remember, they are old for a reason. They have survived for a reason. Let's look a little deeper into why. Admonition two, youth and agility are no match for old age and treachery. So be careful out there, youngsters, because the baby boom is not going to go away quietly. As I will point out later, the baby boom's still got game, serious economic game, change is coming. Increasingly, their daily commutation days are fading. Post-automobile mobility imperatives become increasingly disruptive. Second long wave, make way for the Gen Xers. Move over, boomers. 2020 is the beginning of a new era. The first Gen Xers turn 55 this year. It was originally called the baby bust, because it was a very small, undersized population cohort, born between 65 and 80, which is a very low birth period. Basically, it's a cohort of contraction, a moving indentation on our age structure charts. And it is a generation, despite being small, ultimately became much more diverse than the baby boom because of the Immigration Act of 1965. Historical moment, October 3, 1965. As you can see clearly in the slide, Lyndon Johnson signing the act at the Statue of Liberty, Lower Manhattan in the background. And some of you oldsters out there may remember some of these long-ago faces. Lady Bird, Hubert Humphrey, John Lindsay, A. Beam, Ted, and Bobby Kennedy, all at this momentous event. In any case, today, Gen X is America's neglected middle child. It's sandwiched between the two noisy behemoths of the baby boom and millennials. It's now, in mid-career, poised to assume the leadership ranks left open by exiting boomers. So all you maturing Gen Xers out there, we're depending upon you. The mantle of leadership will soon be thrust upon you. Remember, your disruptive power will be very, very awesome, so be careful. Third demographic cohort, Gen Y millennials. I think everybody's probably suffering from millennial fatigue, so please bear with me, I'll be quick. Millennials, born between 81 and 96, first population cohort born and reared in the digital age, the first digital age generation. That's their key defining element. Well, not completely. More recently, they have been known as Generation Avocado Toast, the new breakfast of champions. In any case, millennials are largely the offspring of the baby boom, bolstered substantially by immigration and immigration offspring. So right now, it is the most diverse urban-centric workforce generation in post-war history. During the 2010s, it supplanted the baby boom as the largest labor market segment. Do you all realize they've become the prized labor force commodity, eagerly sought by a corporate America that requires next-gen digital talent? And where that talent wants to be drives locational decision-making. To this point, much of their post-recession spatial movements could be described as sprawl withdrawal, but now the era of family-raising millennials is commencing, and urban fatigue may be setting in. This year, they're between 24 and 39 years of age, the prime child-wearying stage of the lifecycle. Residential choices of maturing millennials will further shape the metropolitan landscape, particularly when they become homeowners. Now, in this context, unfortunately, there is concern about their financial ability and whether they have the savings discipline to become homeowners. Now, I don't want to sound like an Old Testament prophet railing against millennial fiscal frailties, because I know it is really difficult to defer immediate consumption and to defer instant gratification in order to plan, save, and invest for the future. But it can be done, and my own experience shows this. Now, when I was a kid, I used to play a popular game known as Spin the Bottle. Now, perhaps for some of you, it was before your time, but in one version of this game, a girl spins a Coke bottle, and when it points at a boy who was playing, she either has to kiss him or pay him a nickel. Now, when I was a kid, nickel had significant purchasing power. Now, I played that game an awful lot when I was young, with the unexpected result, by the age of 14, I owned my first home. So very painful, but it can be done. Fourth generation, originally post-millennials, now Gen Z. If you're tired of criticizing millennials, you will soon have a new generation to worry about. Originally termed post-millennials, Gen Z has become the widespread moniker. Born between 97 and 12, it's the first post-World War II generation born in two different centuries. While Gen Y millennials comprised the first generation raised in the digital age, post-millennial Gen Zers comprised the first generation raised in the mobile era of smartphones and social media. So they have grown up with access and hyper-connectivity to everything, everywhere, instantaneously. This year, 2020, the oldest Gen Zers turn 23, just graduated from college. So move over, millennials. All new, young, entry labor force members are now members of Gen Z, and they will be applying to you for jobs. So this is your future. Will they be hostile to working in the suburbs, or will they embrace suburbia as the new frontier in order to differentiate themselves from their millennial predecessors? One thing is certain, they are already highly suspicious and critical of older generations, so you better be prepared for some ensuing disruption. Finally, our fifth generation, Generation Alpha, starting in 2013, largely children of millennials. When we got to Gen Z, we had a problem, we reached the end of the Latin alphabet. So we shifted to the first letter of the Greek alphabet, and that's consistent with switches usually made in the scientific literature. But this is the first generation born totally in the 21st century. They are destined to be another cohort of contraction. Fertility rates nationally and in New Jersey have been trending downward since the Great Recession. In fact, the 2018 fertility rate in the United States was the lowest in the history of the United States. This portends a future of fewer children, fewer young people. Since birth, Alphas had screens placed in front of them, so they've been called Screenagers. They're going to be raised in an era of artificial intelligence, the Internet of Things, and robotics. Now, how this will shape the very essence of this generation is really for future researchers to determine. But as was the case for millennials and Gen Z, digital advances are going to prove to be instrumental. So bottom line, generational transformations will continue to spawn demographic disruptions. For example, as a result of these generational transitions, decline in fertility, a new intergenerational benchmark has just been reached. A new gray dawn is starting to arrive. We're careening toward a future with a lot more geezers and fewer youngsters. This year, for the first time, we'll have more Americans over 60 years of age than we have young Americans under 18 years of age. More people over 60 than under 18. So it's kids versus canes. Is this the new multi-generational divide? So I think a new imperative is connecting So I think a new imperative is connecting across generations, promoting social and economic linkages between young and old. However, this is not going to be an easy task. It's undeniable, and this is causing resentment, that we are a nation still dominated by boomer wealth. According to the Federal Reserve, the total wealth of all American households is one-hundred-and-twenty-two trillion dollars, one-hundred-and-twenty-two trillion. To refresh your memory, a trillion equals a thousand billion. So that's serious money, one-hundred-and-twenty-two trillion. As can be seen in the slide, shaded in yellow, the baby boom holds over half, fifty-four-point-three percent, over sixty-six trillion dollars. So, two more admonitions. For all you youngsters out there, don't confront boomers with your latest taunt. Okay, boomer, that's the harshest thing you can say to baby boomers today. The intergenerational transfer of wealth in the decade ahead is going to be a very powerful force that could benefit you, so be nice. Admonition two, for all you aging boomers out there, you must confront an unpleasant truth, you can't take it with you, you're going to have to do something with it. So it's possible that that wealth and its ultimate distribution will provide one common ground for intergenerational cooperation. Okay, five other transformational forces before the plug is pulled on me. First, the great regional exodus and the immigration locomotive. Now, it may come as some surprise to some of you, but people are actually leaving the broad four-state, thirty-five-county metropolitan region centered on New York City. They're departing for someplace else in the country. How dare they? This is the metropolitan region that I'm going to focus on, fully encompasses the thirteen-county NJTPA region. Now, as you know, the Census Bureau measures two types of migration. The first is net domestic migration, and is limited to origins and destinations within the U.S. Measures the difference between the number of people moving into and moving out of an area. Here are the domestic numbers for the region. Between April one, twenty-ten, and July one, twenty-eighteen, the region had a net domestic migration loss of over one-point-four million people, one-point-four million people. One-point-four million more people moved out than moving in. To drill down deeper, that's every single day, four-hundred-and-sixteen, we lose on a net basis, four-hundred-and-sixty-nine people leaving the region to places elsewhere in the United States. For those of you who are mathematicians, it's three-thousand-and-thirteen days between April one, twenty-ten, and July one, twenty-eighteen. So will the last person out please turn off the lights? Fortunately, there's a counterforce that allows the region to avoid a demographic catastrophe, and this is the second type of migration, international. International composes moves whose origins are external to the United States. It serves as a significant, but not complete replacement. Approximately nine-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand international in movers versus one-point-four million domestic out movers. So international migration has actually become the primary source of population growth. It's really the demographic engine of the region, it's the demographic engine of New Jersey. Nonetheless, if you see, the difference between domestic and international is still a negative minus four-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand people. Fortunately, we're still adding people the old-fashioned way, something known as births, even though they've been declining very significantly. And that enabled the region to have positive population growth just barely between twenty-ten and twenty-eighteen. But births have been declining as a source of population growth, and the thirty-five-county region actually lost population the last two years. In any case, we have a real domestic outmigration problem, and this is the subject of intense partisan political debate, causing the outmigration. So here's how I sidestep this third rail issue. What I tell my students is that these outmigration patterns are really the result of a fundamental navigation error made by the pilgrims. They didn't want to go to Plymouth, Massachusetts, they actually wanted to go to Santa Monica, California. But somehow, their navigation systems got messed up, and they wound up in Massachusetts. And we've been trying to correct for that navigation error ever since. Seriously, outmigration is not solely a New Jersey problem, it's not a New York regional phenomenon. We are not alone, there are broad, multi-state regional population flows. These are the four population regions of the United States. We're the little area on the upper right-hand side of the slide, the northeast region, we're the oldest, most mature part of the country. The northeast had a net domestic migration loss of over two-point-two million, two-point-two million between twenty-ten and twenty-eighteen. In contrast, look at the South, third line down, it had a net in-migration of over three million people. So the northeast region was the big domestic loser, the South the big winner. Thus, we have an outmigration problem for the entire northeast region of the United States, as well as the Midwest region has the same problem. International, you can see, to some degree, helps counterbalance the losses, but it also bolsters very strongly the scale of growth that's taking place in the South, so that has many, many ramifications. Bottom line, though, is immigration is now our demographic growth engine. Without it, we would be confronting a demographic apocalypse. Further national context, with fertility rates at a historic low, the nation now faces demographic stagnation for the balance of the century. The twenty-ten, the far right is estimated by Bill Fry of the Brookings Institution, the seven-point-one percent growth rate between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty is the lowest decade growth rate ever since the first sentence was, first census was undertaken in seventeen-ninety. So the problem of stagnation for the nation will translate into a population contraction problem for the region. Already, as I mentioned before, for the last two years, the thirty-five-county region suffered population losses. The last two years, New Jersey suffered losses, New York State has suffered population losses for the past four years. Okay, second, the global emergence of dominant superstar cities. I think, as we all realize, we're enmeshed in an innovation-based industrial revolution. It's an economy where superstar employees work for superstar firms that are agglomerated into superstar cities, and these superstar cities are potent magnets for the cutting-edge digital elite. The end result is the concentration of entrenched top-tech firms and superstar talent in a few favored places. And New York City, fortunately, is America's leading global superstar, which we're tied in with. Nonetheless, New York City, in the twenty-ten to twenty-eighteen period, still had an outmigration loss, two-hundred-and-fifty-five people per day. Again, they've been bolstered by immigration. So it is simultaneously experiencing a brain drain and a brain gain, and that's the case for the region as a whole. And just like the region, New York City has slipped into population decline between twenty-sixteen and twenty-eighteen. Third, our office ecosystem, this is where much of our innovation and knowledge-based economy is housed, and it's going to continue the structural transformation that started with the Great Recession. The new global corporate office market dynamic, the belief that innovation thrives in dense, interactive, multifunctional, creative environments, and has stifled and insulated one-dimensional suburban campuses. So what we've been experiencing is that twentieth-century economic dinosaurs are being removed from the inventory, while other suburban and urban product is being transformed into twenty-first-century economic assets. And this overall office market ecology has been changing rapidly, and that's going to continue to proceed during the future. Fourth, as you're all well aware, the revolution in retailing, e-commerce, fulfillment, and distribution has yet to run its course. Advancing IT and consumer, and changing consumer expenditure habits are revolutionizing how shopping takes place for all demographics. Clicks are replacing bricks, and the traditional bricks-and-mortar retail meltdown is still gathering momentum. At the same time, e-commerce is revolutionizing our warehouse logistics infrastructure, and the proliferation of fulfillment centers continues. So happiness instantaneously delivered, but how that happiness gets delivered, the last mile, vans, autonomous vehicles, drones, robots, whatever, has yet to be fully invented, and that's going to continue the revolution. And finally, fifth, despite manifold changes and disruptions, one twentieth-century legacy refuses to die, and it still lives on, refuses to expire. Car dependence in America is alive and well, and continues to grow in the twenty-first century, despite fewer miles driven per person. Nationally, between oh-five and eighteen, the number of vehicles driven by American households increased by twenty-five million, twenty-five million in that period. There are now one-point-eight vehicles per household in America. Even in transit-rich New York City, there are one-point-three vehicles per household. So many recession-inspired counter-trends are looking like they were just temporary. So unfortunately, all forecasters are wrong eventually. Unfortunately, all forecasters are calamously wrong eventually. But fortunately, eventually can be a very long time, and when eventually, finally does arrive, I'll be long out of here, and I'm not going to be easily found. But seriously, after doing economic and demographic forecasts for more than four decades, I think you should now take my projections as gospel. You have my personal guarantee that they will occasionally be right. So let me spare you some gruesome details and briefly sum up in one sentence. Widespread and unrelenting technological, economic, and demographic disruptions and structural change will continue to characterize our future. Now, in this context, we may be approaching the point where the region may have to be re-marketed and re-branded to compete in this new era of rolling disruptions and regional shifts. And I should point out, there are always marketing and branding opportunities, particularly since things often aren't always what they seem to be. So keep your eyes open for unanticipated possibilities. So a brief story about Frank Perdue, the Chicken Man, who passed away in two thousand and five at age eighty-four, should prove instructive about rebranding and finding creative opportunities. Now, some of you may remember Frank Perdue was ubiquitous on TV in the seventies and eighties, and he was singularly responsible for branding a very boring commodity, chicken. Chicken was just a simple commodity until Perdue came along. Remember the phrase, "It takes a tough man to make a tender chicken"? And he was very aggressive and creative in his branding efforts. At one point, he actually went to Rome and secured an audience with the Pope. Says, "Your holiness, I have a proposition for you. I would like the Lord's Prayer changed by one word. Instead of 'Give us this day our daily bread,' I would like it to read 'Give us this day our daily chicken.' I will offer you two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars to make this change." Pope said, "Don't be ridiculous," and tossed him out. Two weeks later, Perdue returned and said, "This is more important than I thought. I will offer you eight-hundred-million dollars to change the Lord's Prayer to 'Give us this day our daily chicken.'" He was once again dispatched. But Perdue was very, very persistent, and really wanted to finish the deal, came back, and finally offered three billion dollars to change the word "bread" to "chicken." The Pope was visibly shaken by this sum of money. He immediately called Ghazepi, his secret trusted financial advisor, and asked, "How firm is our contract with Pepperidge Farm?" Now, I was reminded earlier not to forget that the brain can only absorb what the seat can endure, and I sense I'm starting to stress your endurance. So before absorption completely fades, let's finish up this session. One final word, it was my job today to speak, it was yours to listen, I do hope we finished at the same time. So welcome to twenty twenty, and the economic, demographic, and digital disruptions to come. So thank you very much.
There's never a boring moment when Dr. James Hughes speaks. I don't know, normally doesn't say in my agenda about questions, but I think, is there any questions from the board members? Okay? There not being anybody from the audience has any questions, or you're still trying to grasp the message? Very interesting, we have plenty of challenges ahead, to say the least. Next on the agenda is item number H, which is committed reports and actions. In the project prioritization, the first item is the Project Prioritization Committee. I'd like to call on freeholder Kathy DeFilippo, the Chair of the Project Prioritization Committee, to give the committee report. Kathy?
Thank you, Chairman, but I have to admit, Dr. Hughes is going to be a hard act to follow, and that's probably not going to be the first time I say that today. Wonderful, humorous, and yet very insightful. But getting back to the Project Prioritization Committee, I'm pleased to report on the activities at the December ninth joint meeting. The committee considered two action items. The first, the committee recommended approval of a minor amendment to the Fiscal Year twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-three Transportation Improvement Program, or better known as TIP, to add the North Plainfield Downtown Streetscape and Pedestrian Improvements Project in Somerset County. This project comes with its own congressionally-designated funding and is listed as action item number one on today's agenda. Second, the committee recommended approval of a minor amendment to the TIP to add the Fifth Avenue Fair Lawn Avenue Bridge over the Passaic River Project in Passaic County. This would allow the project to advance to construction. This is listed as action item number two on the agenda. And that concludes my report today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Kathy. May I have a motion to approve the resolution? That's on the approval of the minor amendment to Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-three Transportation Improvement Program to add the North Plainfield Downtown Streetscape and Pedestrian Improvement in Somerset. Oh, moved.
Middlesex, seconds.
Okay. Ready? Okay, any comments from the board members about this particular item? Any comments from the members of the public on this particular item? Well, seeing no one, I would like to please Beverly call the role.
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you very much. Item number two is the approval of the minor amendment to the Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-three Transportation Improvement Program to add the Fifth Avenue Bridge, also known as the Fair Lawn Avenue Bridge, over Passaic River Project in Passaic County. May I have a motion to move- I have a motion to move this resolution.
Passaic, move.
Second, Sussex.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the board members? Any comments from the members of the public on this particular item? If none, Beverly, would you please go to the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJ DOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you very much. The next item is the Planning Economic Development. I now call on freeholder John Bartlett, Chair of the Planning Economic Development Committee, to give the committee's report. John?
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you for two excellent years there at the helm.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to report on the activities of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. There were no action items at the December 9 meeting. In the briefing received on the Unified Planning Work Program, or UPWP, committee members were reminded to review the document, which is now posted online, so it can be considered at the February round of committee meetings, with board action scheduled for March. I should note that the work program not only supports planning by central staff here at the NJTPA offices, but also key projects and planning initiatives around the region. Like other city and county subregions, for instance, my home county of Passaic receives formula-based funding for a core set of planning functions through the UPWP. This funding supports compilation and maintenance of up-to-date data, use of GIS mapping systems, identification of project needs and public outreach. In the coming year, Passaic County also will undertake one of two new studies funded competitively through the Subregional Studies Program. This effort will focus on creating a bicycle plan for the county. So the UPWP provides much-needed support for the subregions and I urge you to review it and see how your area will benefit. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Freeholder Bartlett. Next is, I will call on freeholder Jack Kelly, Vice Chairman of the Freight Initiative Committee, to give the committee report.
Mr. Chairman, I also want to congratulate you on two very successful years. You have been outstanding to work with and for, so good luck in your future. I'm pleased to report on the activities of the Freight Initiatives Committee and I want to thank Freeholder De Filippo for chairing that meeting. At the December meeting, central staff reported that port commerce continues to grow, including a dramatic increase in large ships reaching the port thanks to the raising of the Bayonne Bridge. We were also notified that a special conference call meeting may be held in January to consider new freight concept development projects recommended for the program. For the third year in a row, the meeting featured a moderated discussion on the New Jersey industrial real estate market with a panel consisting of a real estate broker and two developers. William Waxman, Executive Vice President of the real estate firm CBRE, said 2019 was a great year. He said that while growing demand for space has pushed up lease rates, users have generally been willing to pay. He cautioned that the trend towards ultra-fast delivery to consumers may not be sustainable as it does lead to concerns about congestion, pollution and waste. Matt Sholenwine, I hope I pronounced that, President of Development and Construction, Greek Development, described his company's work on 4.1 million square feet of distribution facilities at Tremly Point in Linden. He said the site, like others in the region, is attractive because one-third of the US population can be reached from it in a day's drive and approximately 10% of that population can be reached in an hour. Jeff Millenick, Partner Northeast Region Bridge Development Partners, said his company was developing the Incursol Rand Site in Phillipsburg with 4 million square feet of warehousing and distribution space. A big attraction for tenants is the availability of a labor force that is ready, willing and able to work. His company has found it worthwhile to clean up heavily contaminated sites because of the strong demand for industrial space in the region. Presentations from the panel discussion are on the NJTPA website. And this concludes the Freight Initiatives Committee Report. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, Freeholder Holt was unable to attend today's meeting, so we're going to move on to the public participation. We now turn to the public participation section of the meeting. As a reminder, we advise members of the public the three-minute time limit on comments. The light on the timer will go on from green to yellow when there's 30 seconds remaining and the red will then, in three minutes, is reached. In other words, a red light will go on when the three minutes are reached and we ask you to keep your comments within the allocated time.
Okay, Tim Severner from the Transit Village of Mount Tabor, representing New Jersey Association of Rail Passengers and the Coalition of Environmental Groups, proposing solar renewable plus storage instead of the proposed new 100-megawatt natural gas plant in the Meadowlands to power the NJ Transit Grid. As I have told the NJTPA, rail electrification and now the revolutionary potential of solar rail is the most important way to transition transportation greenhouse emissions to clean renewable electric power. Europe and the rest of the world is achieving major reductions in greenhouse emissions by expanding electric rail and now beginning to power it with renewable electric power. The Dutch achieved 100% renewably powered electric rail in 2018. Austria now has 100% renewably powered electric rail. India is not only making major progress in electrifying all its huge rail system, but has just announced 1.2 gigawatts of solar and wind to be used to power its trains. By spending public money on expanding public transit instead of subsidizing private electric cars, Denmark has achieved a 42% reduction in CO2 emissions. We need to do the same in New Jersey, invest public money in green public transit. We would like to thank New Jersey Transit for meeting with us November 15 about the potential to power the New Jersey Transit Grid with solar, wind and energy storage. Since that meeting, we've discovered there is serious potential to power the New Jersey Transit Grid with solar rail, with solar on rail station rooftops, platforms, parking lots and rail yards. First off, the 115 acres of the Copperix Coke Proposed Natural Gas Plant can provide 40 megawatts of solar. We have identified 137 acres of potential solar acreage capable of producing 40 megawatts on the Morris Line from Hoboken to Maplewood and we have identified 189 acres of potential solar acreage capable of producing 75 megawatts on the northeast corridor neck from New York Penn to the Jersey Avenue rail yard. This already totals 155 megawatts versus 100 megawatts for the proposed natural gas plant. This is only in New Jersey railroad properties, does not include potential solar panels on catenaries, which I suggested before, just like PSE and G does, you could put solar panels on the catenaries. And will also save fuel costs for years. Is my time up or that's a warning?
Thirty seconds.
Oh, 30 seconds, okay. So by implementing solar rail, we would catapult New Jersey to the lead in reducing transportation emissions. Then we need to invest in electrifying New Jersey Transit rail empowering with solar, wind plus energy storage. This could be a win-win-win, not only reducing transportation greenhouse emissions, but also saving fuel costs for years, plus partnering with Transit Oriented Developments to provide resiliency.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We appreciate your comments. Any members of the audience who would like to make any other comment? Seeing none, I close that portion of the meeting and we'll now move on to the report by the Nominating Committee and the Elections and Executive Committee of the NJTPA Board of Trustees for the year 2021. At the November 12 board meeting, I announced that I would convene a committee to seek out and review nominations for the NJTPA Executive Committee for the next two years. Joining me in the committee, in the nominating committee, were Hudson County Executive Thomas DeGees and Hunterdon County Freeholder Matthew Holt. We met at least a month and determined by anonymous decisions that the committee recommended the following slate of officers for the 2020-2021 term. Chair, Morris County Freeholder Kathy De Filippo. First Vice Chair, Passaic County Freeholder John Bartlett. Second Vice Chair, Ocean County Freeholder Jack Kelly. And Secretary, Warren County Freeholder Jason Sarnowski. Are there any other nominations from the board? Now, I had, just for information, I sent out an email to everyone as members of the board to utilize at that time the opportunity. If they had any other suggestions, I did not receive any different suggestions, so I mentioned that to the committee and we put forward this committee. And now I ask, once again, if there are any members of the board who have any other suggestions? Since I don't see any other suggestions, my question is, do you accept the nomination? I have a motion to approve the slate of candidates.
Ocean, Sussex.
Middlesex, seconds.
Ocean and Middlesex, seconds? Okay. Any comments from the board members? Any comments from the members of the public on this nomination or the election? Seeing none, Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Jersey City?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJ DOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you very much, Beverly. In accordance with the bylaws, the new chair will be appointing the third vice chair and I want to take this opportunity to congratulate all. I will now turn over the meeting to our new chairwoman, Kathy De Filippo.
Thank you. My first act as chair, I'd like to appoint Middlesex County Freeholder Charles Kenny as the third vice chair. Unfortunately, Freeholder Kenny had a prior commitment and could not be at today's meeting, but he has informed us that he's happy to accept the nomination. I'm also honored to be considered as the Board of Trustees has entrusted me with the position of chair. I'm eager to continue the great work of the NJTPA and I'm honored to follow in the footsteps of Freeholder Angela Estrada, Freeholder Palmer and all the chairs who have served the NJTPA well. Also to Matt Holtz, I really have to say that Freeholder Estrada, Freeholder Palmer and Freeholder Holtz have really been of support to me over the six years that I have served on this board and I want to personally thank each and every one of them, in addition to the staff who is always at our beck and call. I'm just always amazed at how quickly the staff responds to a question or to a situation, a problem that we're dealing with or a concern that a constituent or a county has brought up. So again, I want to thank the staff and my peers as well. Our challenges are many, but I'm certain we're up to the task. I look forward to working with all my friends around this table and the residents of our great region to improve transportation and our quality of life. And I thank many of you who come frequently to these meetings to tell us your ideas and to give us some factual information. At our next meeting, I plan to share more about my vision for the agency during my term as chair, but now it's time to say thank you and thank you to Angela Estrada for her two years of service and I look forward to working with you very closely over the next year.
I think we would need a whole series of videos to explain all of the accomplishments during Angela Estrada's term as NJTPA Chairman. He's the kind of leader who, when faced with an issue, becomes fully engaged and learns as much as he can about it.
Angela really has been a productive chairman and I remember when he came aboard that he says, "I want to get things accomplished. We're going to work together and I want to get things accomplished."
I was elected as a freeholder 20 years ago and, you know, I worked for the airlines for 20 years, so therefore, transportation and freight has always been a very key element in terms of my upbringing, in terms of business. One of my proudest moments across the streets marked, and we have started the Street Smart campaign in over 100 communities. We need to ensure that we reduce the number of fatalities of not only people who are driving, but also the pedestrians.
In the two years that Freeholder Estrada has been chairman, we implemented a staff restructuring and we've completed a detailed federal certification review. This resulted in several commendations for our work program, our TIP and for performance-based planning.
Chairman Estrada follows on something that Chairman DeGees before him and I often talked about, and that is the connection between the eastern and the western side of the state and the fact that we impact each other equally. Everything we do has a positive impact on all areas of our region. The bipartisan tone that Chairman Estrada has brought to this board is part of its success and he is to be credited for that.
I'm very honored to have colleagues from both parties who join along to elect me to this position and for that, I'm very honored, will always be very honored. But I truly believe and have learned tremendously, I truly believe that this is an organization made up of professionals who have an eye on the future.
At a time when the national political climate can be so volatile, Chairman Estrada shows great respect for the rule of law. He sets expectations high for public servants and he treats everyone with utmost courtesy. We're fortunate to have had such a strong leader and mentor for the past two years.
With that, we have, if you can come to the podium with us? May I?
Yes.
May I? Hey, where is it? Angel, again, we want to thank you for this, your dedicated service to the people of our region and to our staff and to your peers. Your advocacy is important for transportation. Please accept this as our token of appreciation for your two years of service.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Wait just a second.
Okay.
Well, I want to thank everyone who, because yes, I may have been the chair, but nothing could have been accomplished. We have the contribution of so many individuals, not to limit employees, not to limit elected officials, individuals from the audience who come and give us ideas constantly. And the fact is that we need to look at the world from a different perspective and that's something that's very important. We have plenty of problems, plenty of challenges that we need to work on. I'm sure we are as good as we were two years ago, 10 years ago, how many years ago was that, Peter? A few years ago, that we have been here. So thanks again for your support and tomorrow is another day, we keep moving on. Thank you.
Before we wrap up, I should announce that our next meeting, which will be held here on March 9 at 10:30, please note the new time. The committee dates for the 2020 can be found in the back of your board books and on the NJTPA calendar. And I want to stress that we're moving this meeting from 10 o'clock to 10:30. We found that it's easier transportation.